Hillary.
Here.
Carly.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Foy.
Here.
All right, I'll stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the oath of office for our newly appointed board member, Jody Kral. So Alexis is on the floor. All right. Come on up.
We'll come over here, wherever you fly.
This is it.
Right here from everybody. Okay. I'm gonna have you write me a rapier for me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member.
Of the office of member.
Of the Board of Education of Brandon School District.
Board of Education of Brandon School District.
According to the best of my knowledge.
According to the best of my knowledge.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Have a seat, Jody. I got a picture I can send you. All right. Next up is superintendent report with Carly Stone.
All right, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here and congratulations to Jody for joining our table. Really excited to have you a part of our board. This evening, we have a showcase from our human resources department. Kathy Valkowski is here this evening to share with you information relative to the work that she has put into the Brandon School District and all the exciting things that are coming ahead of us. So Kathy, with that said, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Here she comes.
And we'll get your presentation up for you here.
All right, good evening, everybody. So those of you that don't know me, Kathy Valkowski, the HR Director here at Brandon School District. We're gonna take a few minutes tonight to just talk about maybe the evolution of HR over the last maybe 24 months. It's been here a little bit, over two years. Chris Harrington, who everybody saw earlier, also a part of the HR team and together just a lot of the things that we have going on. So talk about some trends, too, and then also go over some Brandon demographics as far as turnover stats and kind of what makes up our organization here. So again, I won't spend a ton of time on this, but coming in, some of the first things to take a look at in the first 90 days here, what was going on in the HR department? What's a priority? Kind of take a look at any areas that may have been neglected, what processes were working well, what could be improved, look at the roles and responsibilities within the team, and then build relationships across the district. So those were just a couple of the things. It's hard when you're coming in, maybe not hard, but coming into a new position and just trying to figure even who's who, what's what, all those things. One of the main pieces, I think many of you have been here when I first started here, and most of my background, 16 years or so when I first started at Brandon, was in HR, and about a year of that was in schools. So most of my background is HR, but it was on automotive automation side. So had some things to learn. However, one of the things I would say is HR is HR for a large portion of things. It's one of the reasons I got into it many years ago. I started working in manufacturing, kind of in production planning, and you're really tied to manufacturing with that. And an opportunity in HR is that you can transfer a lot of your skills to different industries. Now, every industry has its own nuances and things you have to learn, but there's a lot of the skills that are transferable. So when I started, how has that experience been helpful? I think just understanding a lot of the pieces of HR and being able to take a look at the department. There are similar projects and timelines, although they look a little different. There's times of the year where you do comp adjustments, you do open enrollment, there's other reporting requirements that are project-based that fall within the scope of HR. On the recruiting side, a lot of things there, that was one of the first things that I jumped into, was trying to help get a handle on recruiting, where we could make some improvements, looking at our job postings, where we were posting jobs, where we might be able to get additional candidates, looking at all that. Building relationships, I think in a lot of the positions I've had, I feel like I've been pretty successful there. There are some challenges in a district, or like with other organizations, there's people in different locations, and who's where, who's the teachers, who are the ancillary staff, things like that. So trying to understand all of that. A lot of the legalities are the same around personnel files, document retention, a lot of the different acts that fall under the HR scope. Handling leave situations, we have a fair amount of leave, so handling that, where can we make some improvements? Offer letters, contracts, all that kind of stuff. Streamlining the onboarding process, still doing some of that, but where can we make some improvements? There are statistics that say new hires decide within the first month whether they're gonna stay with an organization. I heard that many, many years ago, and it's always stuck with me, no matter where I've worked. The first point of contact with a candidate or something that you're dealing with, very important. That's a first impression, and it follows all the way through. So kind of keeping that stuff in mind, that led into new hire orientation as well, just enhancing some things there. There was already a great program that was curriculum-based, and we brought in IT and HR, and added some things there. Trying to be an approachable person, share information, communicate. I had experience with a lot of different HR software. We had to implement frontline recruiting with open schools, so took that on and rolled that out. Again, open enrollment, ACA reporting, ensuring our ACA reports were compliant. Improving communication with hires and transfers. I mean, we always have improvements to make, but we're trying to share that information where it's important, who needs to know. A lot of different people have tasks where those kind of things happen, and making sure they have the information. And then just an employer relation background as well, if staff members have concerns. There are differences, though, although there's a lot of similarities that you come in with, there's differences, right? So still learning a lot on the school side, but how things are funded. Positions are funded, some positions are funded through different grants. How projects are funded and bonds, and how you take that out, all that is different, right? For how private industry works, where you have a product that you may be selling. Planning, a lot of things based on enrollment, looking at enrollment numbers and how we plan for the year. Some processes are similar, but many are different. Teacher evaluation is one example, where in my past, we have performance management, but there's a lot of legislation around teacher evaluation and how that works. And then accountability, where you're accountable, you know, to your tax-based group. That's very different from private industry. But then there's a lot of similarities that I think all organizations face and even struggle with some of these categories, but attracting talent is huge. How do we get people to come to Brandon and to stay in Brandon with retention here at the end? Then compliance, a lot of compliance pieces on the HR side, a lot of legal things that fall there. Culture and engagement, that plays a big part in keeping our talent. How do we hang on to those folks? So I'm gonna go into a little bit of detail on each one of these boxes as far as the similarities and what we're trying to do here to keep our great staff and to keep it forward. So attracting talent, it's a huge dilemma for a lot of different industries, not just education. However, there are some things that are unique to teaching. Recent Forbes articles said that not as many college students are going into the field of teaching, and I think we see that as we see grads coming out of what they're getting into. In 2022, teachers made an average of 26.4 less than other similarly educated professionals. So I think we see some of that, some people coming out of school with an MBA versus maybe a master's in education and how that looks, how the pay rates look. In 2021, Harvard dropped its undergrad teaching program due to declining enrollment. And then similar benefit offerings may be available in other industries. Now, there were some things unique to teaching as far as retirement benefits and things. Some of that has been scaled back by the state and private industry. A lot of them have upped contributions to various plans. But where have we made progress? So here at Brandon, there's things we can do, appreciating our staff, being approachable, taking interest in wellbeing, salary schedules have been updated, we'll talk a little bit about that. Some of that information comes from exit interviews, so listening to the feedback that we get and what can we do with that. Providing support, growth opportunities. There's a lot of opportunities within the school district that, you know, maybe some of the administrative positions open, you know, there are fewer and far between, but there's other opportunities within the district that people can take advantage of. We opened recruiting channels and tried to build some relationships there, again, to try to attract talent, get them familiar with Brandon. We've done some branding opportunities. There's a picture there, just an example of some of the things that, you know, small things that we provide to people on their first day and try to make a fun and welcoming environment. Communication transparency, trying to ensure positions are staffed. Some are, you know, there's more turnover in some than others, paraprofessionals and things. We see some additional turnover. And then share what makes us unique. There's a lot of great things at Brandon, the community involvement here. A lot of the things that the teachers get involved with, it is pretty unique. So just, we're not alone. This is a statistic probably more for private industry, but 77% of companies report talent shortages, which is a 17-year high. So we're not alone in trying to find people and trying to get them to stay, but what can we do to try to keep that going? Another thing, building relationships. So as much as you post jobs and hope candidates come your way, or hope referrals or things might come your way, building relationships is really important. One thing, we were recently invited to take part in OU's secondary culminating seminar, where we did mock interviews and gave tips on interviewing and shared some interview questions to get some new grads prepared to go out. There were special education grads, some ELA grads, and some art grads. That was who was part of that group. And we actually met a Brandon grad there. I should have wrote her name down, but she knew Dan, and she had just graduated a few years ago. And, you know, it's nice, you make those connections, and you just never know who she might be talking to. Okay, there's some old things at Brandon, and you just never know where that leads. And then just some other things. We have been trying to do a little bit more on the student teaching. We have some student teachers coming into elementary and secondary for the fall, as well as counseling. There's always occupational therapy interns here, social work interns starting in the fall. So even that helps us get additional contacts at universities. And, you know, it'd be nice to have some strong relationships there, whereas they have graduates, they can kind of send them our way. Compliance, this is always a big piece. The things highlighted in blue are where we've made some movement or tweaked some things or made some progress. You know, this slide might be a little more dry, but it is important on compliance side, keeping track of observations that apply to Brandon. Regularly audit our HR policies and procedures. Things are always changing. Staying up to date with legal changes they have as well. And then just being consistent in how we apply our policies across the board. So we've tried to make some enhancements. I won't read everything on all the slides, but job postings, as they come out, we've tried to add some additional details there and beat those up. Employee handbook went out last year, we'll have an updated copy here as well. Made some tweaks to the annual Affordable Care Act reporting, some other things with FOIA. Learning about certification and waivers and career authorizations and making sure we have all that placed. That today just renewed a lot of that for people, staff members here, complete that. And then just a lot of the acts, that's not all of them, but some that are across the board, really no matter what industry you're working in, that falls in HR. It was interesting as I was putting this slide deck together, culture and engagement, that's the next piece we talk about, this came up in my LinkedIn feed, and I thought, hmm, that is an interesting way to think about it, that your company culture isn't just words on your website, it's how people feel on Sunday night, right? We all know somebody, or maybe we've been there ourselves, where it's Sunday and it's like, oh, dreading going to work on Monday and talk to people like that. So that does kind of speak volumes, I thought it was interesting. But here at Brandon, I think we have passionate leaders who live into the culture here. And the new values, the core values that were put out, all listed here. But it's been interesting that at the different buildings, they all picked a couple that they wanted to focus on. You know, if you have a couple, you can really focus your attention there. And it's been kind of fun to see how they recognize people for leaning into that, for displaying the values. They mention it in their newsletters. So when you have a team that is really leaning into that, I think that's what makes a culture of engagement. That's what's important. When you feel connected, you feel a sense of purpose to your organization. The core values, when people know what they're working on, what they're working towards, when you have that connection, it's important, you really feel part of the bigger picture. I think anywhere I've ever worked, when you've had that, you understand, no matter the position, kind of where you fit. So some of the things that contribute to a culture of engagement is valuing employees. So appreciating them, being empathetic, providing support, instilling trust, that's another big one. Do what you say you'll do, address concerns, transparent communication, you know, share information, provide timely responses, encourage knowledge sharing, you know, encourage that across the board. And then again, building relationships, that's, you know, I think in every aspect that we talk about, how important that is. One piece of that was the exit interview. Just as an example, we put together an automated form before the start of last school year to start getting some information that's similar, so we can compare from year to year. And going back to the previous slide are these same things, evaluating employees, trust, communication, building relationships. This is just one example, but how did exit interviews do that? One was, you know, you get feedback, and not that you can act on every piece of feedback. It is important, though, when you send out a survey or you ask people for their opinion, to do some things when you can, right? So when is it possible to do things? And we got some feedback that year about the salary schedule in different lanes, and we were able to implement a good lane and work with the union on getting that. So it is important to listen to feedback, whether you can do something with all of it. It's still important for people to know that you hear them, that you're listening to what they say. They feel appreciated with that, it does help build trust, and it continues to build relationships. Retention, again, an unprecedented challenge in education. This kind of goes back to attracting talent. A 2022 poll, so not that old, from Any revealed that 55% of educators plan to leave their jobs sooner than expected. So that's over half, not just moving districts, but leaving the profession altogether. And we've probably heard that from some people that we know in the profession that have opted to maybe get into something else, or they retired earlier and they're doing something different. And that's tough on a district when our teachers turn over and we have different faces in front of our students. It can lead to decreased student achievement, our remaining staff become overburdened, and it can have a negative impact on the culture. So again, some factors, appreciation, support, connection. I think here in Brandon, that's one of the unique things that set us apart, is the community here and the connection that a lot of people have to Brandon, to Ortonville, to the people here, to the people they work with. And what can we do? Celebrating wins is important, big or small, a win's a win. Saying thank you, people do appreciate that. Let people know we care. Help them find networks of support. A lot of them have it on their own, but they need help doing what they can. Collaboration, one of the core values. Resources, support, wellbeing, all those things. Acknowledging achievements of people already thinking, oh, where could I do that? When could I do that? Or all kinds of milestones, these are just a few examples. But there's things in your personal life and in your work life that you may want to recognize. Starts birthdays, work anniversaries, somebody's getting married or having a baby. This bunny here is about this big. He's something we send out to when someone has a baby, because it's hard for a district to recognize every milestone. And the buildings do a lot of their own things, but from central office, this onesie goes on, future black hawk, and we send that out. So just one small thing, but it puts a smile on someone's face. These really cute, huge furry, so that's been kind of fun. There's other work achievements. I think people do a great job of trying to celebrate each other and talk about great things that have happened. Again, the win's big or small, it's still a win, and then any other milestone. So I know the buildings do a lot on their own, but we try on the HR side, we try to jump in and help. So when we talk about retention and turnover, how is that impacting Brandon? So the gray bars here are national average teacher turnover. So this chart only represents our teachers, it's not turnover for the entire district. But when you look at '21, '22, and then '22, '23, the national average was around 25%. A little over and then a little bit under. And then both years, we were under for both, but pretty close to where the national statistics are. The data, the national data's not out yet for '23, '24, and I checked again last Thursday, I couldn't find it. But we're a lot lower than where we have been the last couple of years, which is great news. There's probably some trends tied, starting to turn a little bit. Maybe people aren't jumping to other districts as much. I mean, the last five years, or so, that's really been a big, you know, things we haven't seen in education before. Most people come to a district and stay. And now, you know, a couple of years, there's a lot of movement, so maybe some of that's starting to settle down. But I think that's pretty good news. That, I mean, if you look at that number, it is about half. It's like 11%, where we're sitting close to 25 just two years ago. So pretty good improvements there. And then if we look at our demographics, just what makes up our school district? We have 15% male employees and 85% female employees by age. So that high in the middle, it's sliced up fairly evenly as far as age of employees. And then years of service. So this is interesting, when you look at that kind of middle blue shade, 46% hired in the last five years. So almost half of our staff are fairly new, so still learning a lot, still growing. Fun HR fact, 16.5% of our staff were hired in the last 12 months. So just things to think about when you look at the organization, how many new people? How many people might need support? You know, do we know who might need anything additional? I mean, when you have half your staff under five years, as we all know, it takes some time to get going on a roll and figure out what you're doing. So HR making a difference? Again, I won't read all this, but each of these boxes kind of shows where we've made some improvements, whether it's a new process altogether, or where we've maybe made some enhancements, all across the board, from processes, onboarding, orientation, compliance. And then we've tried to enhance some of the communication materials that come out of the HR department. We've automated some forms, the exit interview is one, some of the transfer requests, some brand information, just things where we can get things back electronically and not always on paper, and trying to track that down, that saves time, allowing us to do some other things. Some of these were hiring flyers, you might have seen them around town. We do try to post them, or we see bulletin boards of various businesses. And then just the kind of the layout, these are just some examples of how our job description format looks. And then what's next for HR, just trying to continue to grow skill set in the public sector. There's always improvements to make, so still trying to go through a lot of our processes and we're gonna get better. Look at offerings that might improve our employee experience, anywhere from healthcare offerings, are there any other ad hoc benefits we might be able to offer? Ensure that HR links to the Brandon strategic plan, we're going through that process now. HR should be centered on that as well. How can we optimize other platforms? We were also able to utilize Mesa for some other things like FMLA administration and using their platform for open enrollment, so that helps streamline some things. There's more we can do there. Understand future needs of the district, so we can be more proactive as a department, and again, focus on employee wellbeing. That's kind of been an HR trend for a few years now, but, you know, coming out of COVID, and just different things affect people differently. And everybody has things going on, and how can you provide support? So the goal here is to continue to create an environment that retains our top talent and our retention bar keeps getting lower, you know, that would be great. If you have any questions. Thank you, Kathy, that was really well done. Thank you, appreciate everything you do. Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you, Kathy. You're well done. At this time, I'd like to ask Brian if you don't mind joining us for a bond update.
Evening. Evening, here to present a quick presentation on just an update for the bond construction and design that we've been going on. As you know, the board knows, we've been working hard the last few weeks to establish our final group of projects to wrap up the line series of the bond. So we've got, I've identified several projects that we'll be working on. We started working on design right now. We'll be presenting to the building committee through the summer and early fall to give them updates. But the goal is to have the projects ready for bidding in the fall, from October timeframe, and then bring the bids to the award prior to the Christmas holiday to get them awarded. So then, right after the holiday, we can get materials ordered and things like that for summer 25 construction. So just want to review those projects real quickly. So first, at the high school, we've got three different projects at the high school. The first project is most of the parking lot areas will be resurfacing, except for the tennis court drive and the large student lot. But all the other parking lots, the soccer, the gym around back of the football field, and also the transportation and maintenance areas off of Goodland Drive, those will all be included. We'll be resurfacing those parking lots. The other project will be interior cross corridor doors. We've got some older-style security gates that are inside the building that are really not allowed anymore by code. They close off to keep people out of the buildings like for an after-hours event or something like that. They only can be unlocked with a key to actually hold them up, so the fire marshal does not accept those anymore. So there is some areas that we can build some cross corridor doors inside the building. So there is some areas where we can build some cross corridor doors inside the building at strategic locations to still give the building security for after-hours events, but it will comply with the emergency code for egress, so no one will be trapped within the building. So that'll also be included in the project. Last project at the high school is pertaining to the soccer field. And several things we'll be doing for the soccer field area. We'll be replacing the bleachers with new ones that are ADA compliant. Also renovating the concession building, interior finishes, plumbing, lighting, heating, right, add some heat inside. Also work on the outside of the building and get that screwed up. We'll be adding some concrete from the ticket booth in the concession area all the way over to the new bleachers, so we'll have ADA accessibility from the parking lot all the way into the facility for visitors and parents to watch games. Also be replacing some of the fenced areas around the complex that has been in need of repair. And then we'll be adding some very tall netting behind the goals to corral the soccer balls that will go into the woods and the river there. And then we'll be adding some wayfinding signage around the campus for people in vehicles so they know where the soccer fields are, football field, the gymnasium, the main entrance, administration. Currently, right now, we're kind of lacking that on the campus. We'll be adding some signage. And also, we're looking at going to add some large kiosk signage at the field. So each of the fields will have an identification for soccer, softball, baseball, et cetera. And last but not least, we'll be instituting a soccer field maintenance program for professional companies that will come in and then administer a year-long maintenance program of fertilizing, aerating, top dressing, all those types of things during the course of the year. These people specialize in putting down these products and when to come at the proper time of the year in between our seasons. As we know, the girls play in the spring, the boys play in the fall. So there's strategic times during the course of the year in between seasons that they will be working on the fields, fertilizing, et cetera. There's a short period of time that the fields will be off limits, that they'll heal a little bit in between the seasons, but we've got some, a lot of research on this, and there are some outside companies that we can contract with that will come in and do those, do those tasks for the, for the district. At the middle school, there's two projects. One is the, all the, we feel we can resurface all of the drives and parking lots around the middle school, all the way out to M15. And then the other project is on the roof is where the heating and cooling systems are for the building. We'll be replacing the refrigeration components of the, of the system, because those are way beyond their useful life, they're on borrowed time with those components. So we'll be replacing the refrigeration components for the middle school. Last project, we had Harvey Swanson, it's pertaining to the concession building that's down by the football field. Needs a major overhaul, this one needs a lot of love. So we'll be redoing the plumbing and the lighting inside now, the heating system, we'll put some heat in there, replace the sinks and the plumbing fixtures, the interior finishes, outside roofing. The big thing is we're going to be adding some EPA toilets to that building next to it, we'll put a dish in on. Right now, you have to go upstairs to get to the bathrooms that are way over by the elementary school. It's really not accessible for someone with a disability, so we'll be bringing those toilets and constructing it right down next to the concession building, so all of the parents and visitors will be able to use those facilities with much more ease than what they can do now. So again, that's the list of projects we'll be working on, and we'll be getting those out for business in the fall, and then bringing those contracts, recommendations to you right before the holiday season, so we can get those rewarded. And then those will be our projects for summer '25, which will pretty much bring us to a closure. I know Jan's got some other things, technology and buses and so forth all along with that. But as far as construction projects, that'll bring us pretty much to a close of the, of the bond after the '25, summer '25 season. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Thank you. You know, that was a lot of work. We appreciate all the time you've gotten with those, what, for those things.
Worked out good. Quick construction update, again, high school pool, that was our big project this year. The metal roofing's been 100% complete, 100% watertight. Interior, the roof deck has been painted, the walls have been painted. Waiting for the paint manufacturer for the roof deck, and it was a special paint to come out and certify that installation, so we have full warranty. I think this will come out next week, I believe. We're also looking at replacing the acoustic panels that were on the walls. Like everything else, when you make things look nice and pretty, those old stuff looks dull and dingy, so they really look bad. So we're getting some prices to replace those acoustic panels with some new ones. Pool will be complete and operational by the week of August 12th, is when the tryouts are starting. Outside, the large brick wall that was put around the dehumidification unit, we're going to put gates on there and doors to secure that, so no one can get in behind that unit. Mechanically, they'll be starting up that unit, we're going to be putting in the ductwork on the inside around the pool also, and that should all be wrapped up by the end of July. So we should be, have air flowing by August 1st in there when we can start the dehumidification process going. Good news is, the swim equipment's supposed to also come by the July. That's the tining system, the touchpads inside the water, and then also the new scoreboard. So those are on schedule, ought to be here by the end of July, so we can get those installed. Again, hopefully operational by the time that the tryouts are starting and we can build an office there. Harvey Swanson's our other project in Goodman Drive. The Swanson parking lot's already been stoned, and underground detention system for the stormwater's been installed. The other areas that are stripped, the old asphalt's been removed. We did make a couple of fine tuning things. We moved the location of the dumpster enclosure at Addison sidewalk there, just to make sure all the buses, as they line up, get proper sidewalk areas so the kids step out right onto the sidewalk and then go up to the school. If you remember, we separated the bus traffic from the car traffic, so they don't intervee with it anymore. Curves in front of these, excuse me, curves in front of the maintenance building along Goodman Drive, we were going to reuse those bumper blocks that were along there, but they're just too deteriorated to use. We're just going to buy some new blocks, it's very minimal cost. And the, along Goodman Drive and also the bus loop turnaround, the base is not as bad as we anticipated when we stripped off the old asphalt. So there's a third-party testing agency that's on site all the time, and they're going to be proofrolling those areas, make a recommendation. Looks like we might be able to keep a lot of that existing base and not totally remove it, so it should result in a credit coming back to the district. So we're going to be working with them on a daily basis to see where exactly we can save base. But it has to meet standards, though, with compaction and so forth. If anything that's bushy, we have the money already in the project to get it out of there and bring in stone, but we're going to try to let us see if we can save some money for the district for the new Goodman Drive. Here's some pictures of progress, pictures of Harvey Swanson. The second picture here, these are, you see these yellow guys actually come all the way down. That's the underground detention system that's actually built under the parking lot to hold stormwater, and then it releases very slowly into the stormwater system. So that's a requirement by the county, because when we redid all this base, we have the responsibility to hold our stormwater and release it very, very slowly back into the storm system and the area. So that's what those pipes are. That black fabric there is a silk fabric that goes over the top of it, allows water to get down in there. And then you can just see some of the stripping and so forth, all the areas that they've done. Some of the underground pipes here, you see a lane there. And then there's a drive in front of a school on the right-hand side. Curbina's going to be replaced, new walkways will be replaced. There's also a larger staging area that Jessica wanted to have right outside the door, so when kids are waiting for mom and dad in the car, right now, that was one of the things, they just have nowhere to stand, it's in the grass, and it becomes just a big mud pit. So we're adding some more concrete areas out there so kids can stand and wait to get picked up, not be in the mud or the snow. So some other areas improvements that we have made along the way. That's really all I have for tonight. Are there any questions I can answer for anyone? Okay, everything's going good, everything's on, on schedule. And we had a little bit of rain these last couple of weeks, so it kind of threw a little wrench in some of the paving, but it looks like we might try a little bit next week. And then if everything goes right with Mother Nature, we should be putting concrete down and curbs in at Swanson and get the asphalt started as well, while they're doing the others' work on Goodman Drive. So they want to get Swanson's parking lot down and in, and then they'll work their way out backwards. So right now, we're on schedule for, should we go to Swanson in the early part of August? And we have plenty of time for the teachers, the staff to come in and get their rooms up. Oh, wait a minute, there's one. Sorry. Middle school, the floor replaced. So all the removals been done, they're putting carpet down right now. You see the office area, the right-hand side, just getting the new carpet. This is the upstairs room where the rest of music, that has the tiered seats, and all the seats have been removed, and they're stored, and then they're going to re-carpet and put the seats back. The tile floor that'll be in the classrooms is not starting yet for about another week, but as you can see, they're progressing really good with the, with the carpet. Just, I saw the carpet manufacturer's rep came in today, he's been out several times to the site, watching the installation go down, helping the contractor with the carpeting and making sure that the adhesive is correct. They're doing tests on the concrete to make sure there's not too much moisture, which will not allow the adhesion of the carpet to the concrete. So he's been out several times. Again, he came to my office this afternoon, he's home, and let me know that we're progressing very, very well. And we're on schedule also to be done by middle of August for open house, so that's our target, is to get all the furniture back in, so when the kids come back in for their lockers and so forth, they'll have all the flooring ready to go. So that's also on schedule. And I promise, that's the last slide. And again, any questions I can answer for anybody? Great, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. So for our next, we normally have public comments and questions on agenda business, and that's what's on our agenda. However, we have a workshop after, and I don't want to hold anyone up because it's going to be long. So I, I do, I would like to amend the agenda to allow citizens input now, so they don't have to stay here a whole. So move the Brandon Board of Education to amend the agenda to change public comments and questions on agenda business to citizens input. Support. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
J, yes. Rebecca?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
So then, that is citizens input. To add? To the. Okay. Sure. Okay, Tom, before we start public comment guidelines, when addressing the board, please recognize yourself by stating your name. Each statement shall be limited to three minutes, you can only speak once. This statement shall be directed at the board only. Generally, the board will not respond to public comments during a meeting. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. To ensure due process and respect of individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. A problem involving an individual or specific incident is best handled through administrative channels. Such matters should be reduced to writing and sent to the superintendent or the board president. While it is not our intent to stifle public comments, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. The board wants to hear what public, what people want to say. We expect each speaker will model for our students and others in the audience on how we can respectfully disagree with others. Use or voice an opinion or ask questions.
Good evening, my name's Tom Haines, and I just, for me tonight, forgive, I'm a page, which I just, I'm a pool, so. Very easy. It meets my objective for attending tonight, so thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Next is approval of consent agenda. Okay, and then. Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support. Can I get a roll call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
All right, information and discussion items, board report. Do we have any last things? We just had Jody come on, I know she came earlier, she, we interviewed her last week, she blew us away with it. We're very excited to have her on. She chose this position until the end of this calendar year, and she actually put in to be on the ballot as well. So we just thank you for being willing to be here and be a part of our board.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And action items, approval of annual school bond loan fund resolution. Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the annual school bond loan fund resolution as presented. Support. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
J, yes. Rebecca?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Approval of human resource report.
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the approval of human resource report as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Approval of bid award for Brandon Middle School AV upgrades. Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the bid award for Brandon Middle School AV upgrades as presented. Support. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
So next up is our board workshop, we're going to take a few minutes, and then Doc's going to come up and do that for us. We appreciate everyone being here, you don't have to stick around, but if you really want to, you can.